The order. This is going to be City of Port Ritchie, City Council Meeting Tuesday, August 24th. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Lord for our invocation. Welcome Pastor Lord.
Thank you, sir. Blessings to everyone. Father, we do pray that your kingdom come right here in Port Ritchie's in heaven, Lord, that you would give us each day our daily bread and, Lord, that we would learn to forgive others as you forgive us and, Lord, keep us from walking into things that bring temptation and destruction to us and our families. Lord, we thank you. It's your power, kingdom, and glory. And, Lord, we're praying that you would work in each of us just to have a pure heart, Lord God, that you could guide us with your wisdom. We just thank you for our city manager and mayor and our council, Lord, just fill them with your wisdom for this city, Lord. We look to you to protect and keep the city safe and, Lord, through your power, working through our police and fire department, Lord, and, Lord, deliver us from the fears that come about the COVID and all the things that's going on. Let Port Ritchie be a city of peace. And, Lord, we just thank you for learning how to love one another and help one another here and, Lord, just oversee our meeting tonight and get your perfect will done in Port Ritchie in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Scott Trumbly.
Here.
Vice Mayor William Dipmer.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman Tom McClary.
Here.
Councilman Tom Consella.
Mr. Martin Lee.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager John Dute.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to amend tonight's agenda or council business. And what I wanted to add to the very end, which is also set for budget workshop next week, would be two items, which are the Vector truck and the crane truck for discussion only. I think the city management, as well as finance, are prepared to talk about that, just to give us a heads up on where we're headed for next week. So I was looking for a motion to add that for discussion only to tonight's meeting.
Motion to add to agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, so added. At this time, we're looking for a motion to approve council minutes.
Motion approves council minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to move on to comments from the general public. Ms. Pat Rogers, welcome. Come on up.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard. I think that in June or July, I had asked if we could have a housekeeping meeting for Board of Adjustments, and I think it kind of fell through the cracks with all, everything that's been going on because we haven't had a meeting this year. Also, the last time we did one of these, we had it at 5:00, which worked for the board members. So is that something that we can schedule?
Thank you. The next person that's signed up for comments from the general public is Pastor Lord. Welcome.
Thank you. Leonard Lord, I pastor it, 8114 Lee O'Kidd Avenue. I just want to briefly touch on Cure Fest again. I had met with a couple working with the county and Meals on Wheels, and they said they have put together 20 projects from Pasco County. So we do have those, and so just want to continue to let you know if there's things in the city that we can help do. This is one time of the year that the church incorporated in Tampa Bay area come to partner with cities to try to raise up those things that needs doing, particularly code enforcement. Like for Pasco County, it's basically Meals on Wheels where they see needs where elderly people just can't get things done and don't have the money. And so if that's something on your radar, something we do in the parks, just let us know. Hopefully, the permit for Waterfront Park will come to, and that'll be our base. That'll be September 25. We'll meet at 8:30 and take the projects in the area, and we'll have the local churches and people to serve. And we've got, it's kind of like a clean up the park, only it's kind of clean up the whole area with what they've got. So any way we can serve in that, we appreciate it. What we do is get the project, somebody evaluates them and adopts them to make sure we have the team there to try to get it done that day if possible. Also, I was talking with Mr. Dute, and I just kind of got in my heart this thing maybe of a fall festival in Waterfront Park, what that would be. Pastor Jerry with the Oasis has this network of different singing groups. It would be where maybe we would have a march of peace with maybe some banners and go to Runner for Park where we just really uplift hope in things and a time of peace and even talking about maybe moving our annual fish fry out there. But I talked to Mr. Dute, he said that sounded fine. So I would like some feedback. I, as a pastor, would like to see us come more together with family things of networking, how we can help and continue just to make our city a great city. And so thank you all. It's an honor to serve with you. Any way we can call, you can call me whenever. And thank you so much. Appreciate you chiefs and what y'all do and working together. So, Lord bless you and thank you so much, okay?
Thank you Pastor Lord.
That's all that's signed up.
Anyone else by show of hands like to speak? Moving on to comments from boards and committees, we have Linda Rodriguez, welcome. Come on up.
Linda Rodriguez, 5917 Lantern Court. Just a couple of things, just wanted to remind everybody, next Thursday is our CAC meeting here at the city at 6:00 PM. Everybody is welcome. And one of the things we've done, as you know, over the past year and a half, two years, we've been doing the meet your neighbor, and we've been going to the area businesses and people have been coming out, and it's been really good. But we've decided to change it up a little bit. We're going to go to the parks. We're going to go to different Port Ritchie parks and families come, bring your chair, bring your cooler, and then we're just going to mingle there. So, and we also decided to do it quarterly instead of monthly right now. So our next one is going to be December 1st, 5:30, and we're going to do it at Waterfront Park. Bring the kids, bring the frisbees, bring your chair, cooler, come and go as you please. And we would just try to figure, go to the different parks and highlight our parks because they really are very beautiful. So.
Where's Thursday's at?
This, the CAC meeting is here at 6:00 on the second. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yep, first Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you so much. I believe that's all we have for comments from boards and committees. At this time, we're going to move on to comments from our city manager, and I'm going to pass it to Mr. Dute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Latest on the dredging of Canal's 26A and one, visited with our grant manager this morning. The county has assigned a new person to the, that grant project at county level. We did have contact from our person at Treasury. They're processing. They didn't have anything positive or negative for us, which, again, we'll take that to be no news is good news, but good to know the county has assigned a new person to that. So we now have a new interlocutor there. I'd bring you up to speed on the Cody River Landing project. Mr. Martin is here, and at his appointed time, he will have a lot more detail than I would. In operations, probably the most significant thing, our new IT person, Christina, is reviewing all of our internal processes, including billing. She's also making her way through our vendor contract with Big Sur. She's developing some ideas about that, but probably most notably has been doing a good job of looking at how we've been billed in the past and the kinds of things that she's taking care of that we should not be getting bills for. So I appreciate her work on that. Couple of the things that staff and I, a couple of meetings that staff and I participated in over the last two weeks, we had a pre-development meeting with a developer, a builder, and engineer. They're working on a project at Tyndale and Limit, and it's an exciting project, and they were coming in with their preliminary ideas, and so looking forward to working with Over the last week and a half, I've been meeting with department heads, Pam and I have, to kind of brainstorm their ideas, their needs in the grant world. Pam's been making a list of projects and ideas from department heads. I think we've got one more coming up this week. But just trying to get some idea of what their priorities are, and that helps Pam in the grant search process so that, you know, she knows we want a truck, then she can look for grants that have truck attached to it. So appreciate everybody's work on that. We met with our PRM representative. Rachel and I sat down with PRM rep. We're going to have a slight increase in our property and liability insurance, slight what, percent and a half? Minimal. Claims are about where they would expect us to be, and so we've looked at our renewal. We have our renewal process underway. Today, we met with Pasco County's grant manager from Brick in FEMA and reviewed some ideas and got some guidance from him about some grant opportunities that we, as the city, can pursue without the county's assistance or without the county's involvement. He also offered any help and support as we go through that. There's a couple of opportunities that are joint city-county projects that we'll be continuing to keep track of as well. So appreciated his time coming over to City Hall. ARPA, the American Recover Plan Act, that, our performance agreement has been received, and so Treasury has sent that through the state to us. It's being reviewed by both myself, but more importantly, by Mr. Matthew. Twenty-five pages or so of what we would be agreeing to accept the money. Looks like the final tally is going to be about 1.4 million. As expected, it'll come in two tranches, they call it. So as soon as we get the document, the agreement reviewed, signed, and returned, we would expect to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of about $700,000. A year later, we'll get the other 700,000. Lots of rules about how to spend it, lots of guidance, but I'll be bringing a proposal to you here in the very near future for your input and obviously for approval of the agreement. In personnel, our two utility billing positions have been filled, and I reported on that a couple of weeks ago. Those two ladies are in training right now. They'll also, once they get done with utility billing training, we'll start cross-training them in some of the building department functions. So we'll have at least three people, plus Veronica and Alondra, who rotate among several functions and positions. There's times when billing is swamped and it takes all three people, and there's times when it's not as busy for billing, and we can move some of those resources over to the billing department. So wanted to bring you up to speed on fireworks. We've been in contact with a number of vendors. None of them are available on the 31st of December. And the dates that they are available, it looks to me and staff like probably the most viable date is the 18th of December. I understand there's a party, an event that weekend as well. So there's a boat parade on that Saturday, and I'll have that proposal to you at our next council meeting. Works out to about $1,000 a minute. So if you want to spend 12,000 to 15,000, we're going to get about 15 minutes worth of fireworks, but I'll bring that to you here at our next council meeting.
They shoot them with boats?
Well, they start on boats. Don't want to get into that. On a personal note, I'll be out of the office this Friday and next Monday, going to take two days of personal time. So that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, I stand for your questions.
Answer. To the council first, we'll start with Councilman Consella since he's virtual at this time. Any questions or comments?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I do have one. A couple of meetings ago, we brought up checking or updating our health insurance premiums. Like I said, I know we were bumped into a higher category because of high claims several years ago. Just want us to review that to see if we can make it back to the cheaper category.
So I don't have, I don't have an answer specifically to that question. I just got this this afternoon. Our claim count, our expenditure comparing 2020 to 2021, in fiscal year 20, we paid out about $246,000 in claims. This year, year-to-date, through the 1st of July, we've paid out about 208,000. So we're at about the same place in claims and payouts. This year, we've had 63 distinct, I'm sorry, we've had 2,060 individual claims. And, you know, that could be everything from a well baby check to a heart transplant. So, you know, it doesn't differentiate between really serious stuff or just went in for a checkup. So I'll get this out to the council very shortly. Just got it this afternoon, so I couldn't get it in your packet. But whether we're going to be able to drop down a notch or not, I don't have that yet. It looks like our claims are on par with last year.
I think it was a three-year review at the time we did it, so we should be due. Okay. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Sorrell?
I'm just fine, thank you.
Perfect.
I have no further.
So that concludes comments from our city manager. And any questions? We're going to move on to comments from the board. I'm going to start with Mr. McClary and work back down the other way.
I'm seeing some complaints regarding code enforcement. I know we recently brought on a new code official. I've seen him actually going through the city, which was a great thing to see, and going forward. Are we going to continue to get the monthly reports as to enforcement and areas of enforcement for the, from the code enforcement official?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's definitely been a lot of talk among our citizens about the code enforcement and how important it is. So I guess we can't stress enough that it is important and it is something that's being looked at.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
The other thing I'm going to bring up tonight, I've kind of just mentioned in the past, but it has to do with our utilities or water department. The last, I think, CIP plan that we formally have put together was from 2004. I think one of the reasons we're looking at replacing two very expensive pieces of equipment at the same time, in some part, is not having a more updated CIP plan. And I'm still recommending that we look at having, and there may be some engineering firms that'll do it for free, to come in and just give us an overview of our water department and tell us how it can run more efficiently, help us with the CIP, figure out infrastructure and when that needs to be replaced, and maybe put together a plan with us. And whether or not we can find one that'll do it. I think there used to be a couple that would come out and do it either by grant or relatively inexpensive or for free. If not, I still think we need an engineer at some point to come out and give us some information so we know what to do in terms of future, not only CIP, but with sewer water and some other areas over there in terms of billing and how to set rates. And I think one of the issues, and I wanted to ask Rachel, looking at budgets from past year, it looks like that we're losing money out of our stormwater reserves every year, which means we're not charging enough. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. We need to update the rate analysis because we're not charging accurately. We're not billing for what we're actually expending.
Okay. Thank you. And rather than just having an expert come in and help us set rates, I think it's hard to set rates without addressing all of those issues, including the infrastructure. So that's something I kind of want to strongly recommend for next year. And I wanted to know if we can either agree to put it on a meeting at some point to talk about it, but I think it needs to be addressed. So that's why I was bringing it up at this point. Other than that, that's all I had, and I didn't know just by show of verbal if anyone has any comments or suggestions as it relates to that issue. Mr. McClary?
I don't have an objection to, one, talking about it and, two, putting it on the table. I have hesitation not to get into the weeds with it regarding the free advice that you get from some, because sometimes it's not, it's worth exactly what you get. I believe, and I know we've had some conversations before, that that may be an avenue of some ARPA money in terms of the capital improvements to the water system. And, you know, when we have that discussion, maybe we could look at financing, is it feasible through ARPA? So it doesn't, isn't necessarily a budget hit. It is a federal supplied cost, because I would care to stay away from the free advice.
If I can comment on that, I'm 100% on board with what you're saying. And I think to pay for an engineer to come out and just put it out for bitter, if there's one on the approved list, I'm fine with that. But I would rather have the engineer come out and having worked on it, so when the ARPA money does come, we know where some of that money should go already. I'd rather be ahead of it than behind it, I guess, is where I'm coming from. And it goes to what you're saying, whether it's free or whether we pay for an engineer, to me, it doesn't matter where we get that information from, it just needs to be done. Are you, any common opinion on that?
I don't have any problem with it. When was the last time we had rate changes on both our water and our sewer? Do we know?
We, I can answer that question. We actually just implemented the last 4% increase that was part of the original 2013 ordinance just a few months ago. That last 4% was held back due to resolution and then was delayed even further. There was no direction on it. I brought this up to our city manager, and he instructed that we should be following the guidelines of the ordinance and implement that last 4%. So that was just implemented a few months ago. So we have satisfied the ordinance from 2013, but we have not done any further studies since that time.
And to clarify, you're talking about the water rates, not sewer or stormwater?
Well, no. No stormwater rates have been done since the original ordinance was passed. I believe that was 2006. So there has been no change in stormwater rates. The last rate study that we had covered water, sewer, and our impact fees.
Okay.
For water and sewer only.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Consella, did you have any questions or comments on that particular issue?
No, I don't.
That having been said, that's all I had for my comments. I was going to pass it over to Councilwoman Sorrell.
Oh, I'm fine, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I did, water billing was one of the ones that I had on there as well, because I know we're going to take a look at that again. Also, I think we need to sit down and review our impact fees because that's something that's way overdue. I've noticed, and I reviewed those, and we were way low in a lot of areas on the impact fees. So I'd like to bring that up sometime for us to review. And the last one was for the chief on the update on the speed meters. I know we've been moving it around. Have we gotten any kind of consensus on that other than the initial week that we did?
You're referring to old posts? We've had it out there, and so far, it's in line with the first report that we had given you with a very low enforcement rate in the 1% to 2% range.
So it's still under that DOT number that they suggest?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
And did you want to comment on the impact fee issue?
You had mentioned impact, are we talking developmental impact fees or, okay, okay. Just for, because we just had the water sewer impact fees. Okay.
Councilman Consella, did you have anything for just the general comment section?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion.
Motion to move consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, for council business, we're going to move on to item three, which is the update on the survey of Cody River Landing area, and I'm going to pass that to city management, Mr. John Dute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to have Mr. Martin with us this evening with Air. I know his guys have been out in the area doing stuff, but I figured it'd be better to have Chris talk about his guys and their work and where Air's is with the planning. Mr. Martin, if you would, please. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, members of council, great to be with you today. Thank you much.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am Chris Martin with Air's associates, and it is my pleasure to provide a status report and update on the Waterfront Overlay District project, Phase One, where we're at, what's been done, and what we have scheduled for the remaining design development effort. In general, Phase One of this project was a five-month-long duration, and we are vastly approaching Month Two. The Phase One portion of the project was primarily focused on safety enhancements by way of pedestrian access, adding sidewalk connectivity in and around that entire Waterfront Overlay District, improving the lighting, as well as improving the traffic circulation within the area. As we approach two months, the surveying department, as you've seen, their trucks on site have been at it for two months now, and they are 95% complete with their field effort. We expect a set of drawings and CAD files next week, of which will be the base drawing for us to build our improvements on. The remaining 5% of their survey effort will comprise of some utility locating and identification effort. We'd like to thank Mr. Weeks here from the city, who had the opportunity to meet our staff on site and was extremely helpful in identifying where some of the critical city infrastructure utility-wise is, mainly that lift station we have on site, which is a key element to avoid impacting. So with the survey being 95% complete, we should get the files next week to where we begin our real alignment of the sidewalk and assessing the traffic pattern, converting to a one-way. And concurrent with the survey effort that's been ongoing has been a utility coordination and design effort as much as can possibly be done prior to receiving the CAD files of the topographic survey. To that end, we've reached out to Duke Energy to assess leasing options for the lighting system, and Duke is on board for assessing what, how they can help the project and what opportunities there are for leasing and what those fixtures may look like. What Duke is in need of is a conceptual plan to begin their assessment. So once we get the survey back, we anticipate a one-month period to develop a conceptual plan to enter those negotiations or discussions with Duke. Concurrent with those discussions with Duke, we've reached out to the Florida Department of Transportation, the FDOT, to assess the viability of restricting the southbound US-19 right turn into Cody with our revised traffic pattern there. That would be a very challenging right turn to make. It would almost require a 270-degree turnaround, which doesn't make the most sense from a safety standpoint. So while the survey is ongoing, we have reached out to Duke Energy, and they are on board with assessing the conceptual plan once that's prepared, as well as the FDOT did not present any design constraints or obstacles in approving that right turn revision. And just like Duke, they will evaluate that proposal once a conceptual plan is prepared. So with an overall project of five months long, we're at the two-month mark now. The next month will be development of a conceptual plan to enter those negotiations with Duke as well as the FDOT, and then further progressing the design development on up to the five-month period. So happy to report as of right now, we are absolutely on schedule. The survey work is progressing well, and they expect to meet their deadline next week, and looking forward to coordinating with Duke and the FDOT on working with them to resolve those issues. Welcome to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. If I may start. One of the questions or issues that I wanted to raise is since you've been here last, the city has now purchased property that's right in the heart of what's going on with our Waterfront Overlay District improvement plan here. So I didn't know if that changes kind of where you're coming from, because the property we purchased, for example, is right there on the corner where the, you know, that turn is. So I don't know if it changes, you know, sidewalk sliding, or if you guys are going to take that into account as you develop that area in the design.
We'll absolutely take that into account, and I think that was a great purchase by the city to improve that area. It does not impact our proposed sidewalk alignment or the traffic pattern at this point, but we'll look at opportunities on what direction the city wants to go with how to improve those parcels and what direction we want to go. There's a lot of opportunities to enhance that area now that these parcels have been acquired.
Okay.
What immediately comes to mind is parking, but there's other opportunities in addition to the Nyx Park parcel, which we've looked at considering some modifications to as well. to the Nix Park parcel, which we've looked at considering some modifications to as well. None of those, the two new parcels that were purchased, as well as any improvements to Nix Park, do not have a direct and immediate impact to the Phase One improvements that are underway right now.
Okay. And those would be in later phases anyways, would they not, because of where they're geographically located within the area?
Correct.
Okay. That's all that I had, I didn't, I wanted to open up questions from the board.
I'm fine, thank you.
I did have one quick question, same thing on Nix Park. We had discussion of converting that back to a park, maybe boat docks, and those kinds of things. So, in your future concept plans, will you present that, is that option as well?
We absolutely can. In fact, our design teams have been considering and conceptually planning what opportunities we have to fit in that park, and we've got a tremendous amount of ideas we're interested in checking.
Okay, alright, great, thank you.
Councilman Consala, were you able to follow the presentation, and do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Mr. Duke, anything?
Nope. Great to be here. Exciting stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
At this time, we're going to move on to council item number four, that surplus of police department service handguns. Pass that to Mr. Duke, and I imagine it'll go to our chief for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will hand it off to Chief Robinson.
At the present time, we utilize Glock 2240 caliber handguns as our issued duty weapon. These weapons that we are proposing to surplus are not those, they're smaller versions, and we don't use them. So, in anticipation of having some extra weapons, now that we do have agency armors, if a weapon goes down from one of our officers, we'll at least have a couple of additional weapons to issue while that one is being repaired. At the present time, we only have one. So this is just in order to be ahead of the game, if you will, in case we need a couple of other additional weapons.
Wouldn't you just store those in a locker somewhere?
No, it's in the armory.
Okay. I didn't know that we had an armory in our police department, that's why I was asking you. Okay. And so the recommended action is, you're looking for a motion to approve keeping surplus handguns for potential use?
What we're looking to do is trade two Glock 27s that we do not use to purchase two Glock 22s, which we do use.
Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out, okay. So looking for a motion? Or a discussion?
Motion to approve surplus police service handguns?
Second.
Before we vote, anyone from the public have any comment? Seeing no hands, any reason for any discussion amongst council? None? Let's put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to city, item five, which is the city hall surplus of equipment. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see in the pictures, a number of pieces of office equipment and some cameras items that we no longer have use for with our newly installed security camera system. We've got some pieces of video equipment that are no longer needed, would want to dispose of those.
Recommended action, you looking for a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the electronic camera equipment as surplus property and dispose of by proper means.
Second.
Before we vote, any, anything from the general public? Seeing no hands, any reason for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to item six, which is an amended council business item, and that's going to be the potential purchase for two trucks, one being a VAC trucker, VAC truck, and one being a crane truck used by our utilities department, and I wanted to pass that to Mr. Duke, just for brief explanation, and then open it for discussion if we may.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Spent a good deal of time with operations and Ritchie and Public Works. The VAC truck that we have, we've looked at trying to rehabilitate the VAC truck. It is possible to put, you know, new tanks on it and new pumps, you're still putting it on top of a 20-something-year-old vehicle, I think the numbers are. The VAC truck use, I know we've discussed, couldn't we rent them, can we borrow them, can we have an MOU from, you know, from another entity, either Newport or Pasco County? The recent heavy rains with spills out of one of our lift stations, I think we had two incidents where the lift station overflowed. Because we had our own VAC truck, we were able to have that truck on the scene within 20 to 30 minutes of the initial call. Ritchie, I didn't know this until we started this conversation, you know, I'm beating up on Ritchie, saying, "Look, why, you know, why don't we borrow one from our neighbors? US Water has, you know, dozens of them, our neighbors have plenty." And, the very reasonable and understandable answer is that when we need a VAC truck, they're all using their VAC trucks, for the same reason. It rained, lift stations are filled up, they're just not available at the time we need them. Last time, said he had to, he found one, it was a two-hour drive, you know, by then we were going to have our own problem solved. So, there is some value to having a truck in our lot, ready to go when we need it. On the day-to-day stuff, that truck's also used for main breaks and that kind of thing. Those are times when it probably is possible to go to US Water and borrow a truck or rent a truck. But it's the lift station overflows, the flood and rain-related activities that really put the time crunch on us. The affiliated with that is anytime we have sewage get outside of our system. We have an obligation, which we fulfill, but we have an obligation to report to the state that we've had a spill, how much, how long did it take us to get it cleaned up, you know, what mitigation actions did we take? So, to, you know, kind of make the case for, they convinced me, I was with some of you, we need to just rent one when we need it. But, when it's raining four inches and every lift station in the county is overflowing, there's not going to be one available. So, that's, hopefully, in very brief, that's a bit of the why we need a VAC truck. How we purchase it, whether we, you know, pay cash for it, whether we do a lease purchase, that's something Rachel and I have wrestled with, and obviously, if this is something that you're amenable to, we would bring a, you know, proposal back to you and say, "Here's the truck that we want, here's the bids that we got, here's the financing that is available to us," whether that's, you know, write a check out of, out of impact fees or out of Pasco, Penny for Pasco. But, obviously, you have another opportunity to have input, you know, approve or disapprove before we can actually buy a truck. The crane truck is very similar. The crane truck that we have is old, we spent a lot of time and money on repairs, and it is not big enough to pick up some of our larger pumps. And, so even if we keep it in good repair, there are times we have to rent a much larger crane truck. And so what Ritchie and Sal and I have been looking at is a, is a truck that has the capacity, and we don't have to put it in the shop every other month to have it repaired. The crane truck really is, we've gotten about 98% of its life out of it, and it's time, not only for a new truck, but a truck big enough to pick up the pumps that we have. When it's time to pick those, when it's time to do that, you know, it's usually time you don't want your, I mean, if we're replacing a pump, somebody's out of service, and so time is of the essence. So, hopefully, in brief and not very detailed explanation, that's my understanding of why we're looking at, asking you for approval to buy two different expensive pieces of equipment.
Okay. And at this time, we're going to open for discussion. I kind of wanted to open the discussion, if you guys don't mind, with, undoubtedly, I believe there's a need, whether we rent, buy, whatever, for both trucks. So, the next person I wanted to get some information from, if you guys don't mind, is I wanted to ask, Rachel, I think she has maybe some numbers for us, for potential cost, and then, and then from there, I wanted to know whether, where the pools of money had come from, where Penny for Pasco, utilities, you know, who's using the trucks, I think we need to discuss that as well. So, do you have just an approximation in terms of the value or the cost to replace these trucks?
Yes, so the total cost for the Vector truck, we looked at leasing it, it seemed a little bit more reasonable. The total cost for it upfront would be $433,000. So, we looked at a leasing plan for seven years, at 2.85% would bring the payments to about $70,000 a year. And then, for the crane truck, it was $120,000, around there for that vehicle.
Okay. And, the question I had, I didn't hear the numbers, did you say 433 or 533?
433.
Okay. And amortized over a period of?
Seven years.
Seven years with 70,000?
Yep, it's about 2.85% was the rate that we had gotten, but obviously, we'd go out and get other quotes if you agree with that.
And, from a budget standpoint, just curious, well, I guess the question for city management before we ask budget, are these trucks only used for utilities or are they used in other areas of the city? Do we know?
They're, they're used across the spectrum. When it's time to set playground equipment, the Parks guys will be using them if it's, you know, they'll be used on water and sewer and stormwater projects as well. The primary function for, for the VAC truck, sewer for pumping down lift stations, and water when we're, when we're working main breaks, that VAC hose goes into the pit, pulls the leaking water out, so the guys can actually make the repair without doing it underwater. Obviously, you know, it's not near as common that we'd take the crane truck out, pick up a piece of playground equipment, but, you know, those are occasional uses for the, for the crane truck. But lifting pumps, that's the, as I understand it, that's the primary function that currently we don't have the capacity to do on the larger pumps.
So, let me back up. So, the recommendation from city manage, management is to replace both vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, is there a recommendation on how to fund it, whether or not it's coming from Penny for Pasco Utilities? Do you have a recommendation on that?
Well, Penny for Pasco is probably the cleanest way to do it. There's, impact fees are much more restricted, and we get into trying to define whether we're replacing, maintaining, or improving the system. And so, that's, again, that's a conversation that Mr. Matthew and Rachel and I would sit down and wrestle with that, but Penny for Pasco is a much cleaner way to do that. Obviously, I'd defer to Rachel for any of her input.
Okay. And I guess the question that I had, is there any, for example, the VAC truck is very expensive, as well as both trucks, it's a lot of money. Is it possible to pay Penny for Pasco for a portion and then utilities for the other portion? In other words, can you break it up?
Yeah, we could do a combination.
So, for example, if we wanted to pay cash for a crane truck, could we use 60 grand, just for example, rough numbers, Penny for Pasco and 60 out of the utilities?
Yes, we could.
Okay. And then, the VAC truck, is that the same, are there any requirements on whether or not we can use Penny for Pasco if we're going to make a purchase versus utilities? In other words, that's seven, if we, if we pay cash, if we could pay cash, can we break it between the two funds, or if we're going to amortize it, where would that come over the next seven years? Do you have?
It's the same, you could also split fund it if you wanted to.
So you could do 35 grand out of each fund?
Yes.
For the next seven years? Okay. And, at this time, I just wanted to open it for discussion, because I wanted to have some framework laid out before we get to the budget meeting next week. And, one of my first thoughts was, why can't we rent this equipment? And I had the same thought, but, you know, I wanted to see Mr. McClary's position on whether or not we purchase for rent and all these different issues.
How many hours a day, on the average working day, is the VAC truck used?
Forget about emergency rainstorms.
Well, it all depends on, once again, you know, you've got your busy season, which we're in right now, you've got your off-season during the drought season, and, you know, once again, in this fall, on, the Vector truck is, you know, like I said, it handles three different aspects. It handles bowl, you know, it handles, you know, potable main breaks, it handles lift station sewer, you know, emergencies, and also, not just emergencies in the middle of the night, but also if we have, you know, if anything from power outages or anything if the pumps go down, that this truck can be used to pump, you know, pump those particular lift stations down, and then transport that to a lift station that's working. But, it also helps with our stormwater system. It's, you know, it's, of course, it's always out, jetting lines, blowing lines out, you know, especially for the next raining season. So, the Vector has at least three aspects, and I've also spoken to the fire department, it's also been used in, you know, a couple of small but, you know, actual rescue operations. You know, years ago, the Vector was used on the corner of Miller Bayou and Bay Boulevard to rescue a small animal, because the animal was caught inside a storm pipe. So, with the combination of both the fire department, utility department, the vehicle was used to help remove a root segment in the storm line, and then they were able to rescue the animal. So, the, the truck has many different aspects that it could be used. During this time, I mean, I just had the truck out on US-19 for a 10-inch main break, they were out there for, I would say, they were there from 11:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night, working that particular main break. We've had several calls on the, on the Grand Boulevard, east side of the city. Our Chapel Lift Station is one of the lowest points in the city as far as lift stations are concerned, and this also brings up the, the issue of renting a vehicle. We have to understand that this is not, it's not a small or complete piece of equipment that most rental areas would have an abundance of. We're talking a half a million dollar Vector truck. It would be just more or less if I asked the fire department on, you know, renting, you know, renting a fire truck in the same aspect that, you know, it's not that, there's a lot of places to go ahead and pick up one. Even, and we, I have one company that was actually going to provide me numbers for our next budget workshop, as far as how much, you know, how much his company is going to rent, but I'm also going to try and get a few other companies on the possibility of, you know, how much they would charge. But, it's not only the issue of renting the truck, it's a matter of availability. During the times that we would actually, you know, right now, if we need more than one truck, it's mostly during an emergency situation. That situation, of course, if, you know, during, you know, during a heavy storm, that storm is covering several, several counties. So, of course, Pasco County, Hernando County, Citrus County, any of the, you know, inside counties, you know, are all, you know, everyone is asking for trucks simultaneously, because they all have low areas, they all have lift stations that are overflowing due to stormwater intrusion. So they, of course, want to pump them down and take care of, you know, take care of the business that they have for their, for their municipality. So, of course, us being the small, you know, the small fish in a big pond, it's very hard for us to acquire one. The representative that we were just talking to about getting, getting us some of the numbers for the, for the lease of the Vector, his estimate, well, like I said, he'll provide hard numbers to me by, you know, the next workshop, he's looking at $12,000, you know, a month for, you know, to rent a machine. Now, of course, we're not going to rent one for a month straight, but of course, we could take that number and break it down to a week, today, and whatnot. Where, given our payment right now, is that, you know, we're looking at half that for a month to buy our own. So, like I said, I'll have more, I'm supposed to have more estimates and harder numbers by our next meeting, I just didn't plan for this tonight.
Okay.
I'll get you ours.
Okay, and here's what, what, the reason why I asked that question. We have a VAC truck, it's somewhat functioning. What is the analysis of keeping the existing VAC truck, doing minor repairs for emergency use only, and then renting a VAC truck for the day-to-day usage, or whatever? And here's the reason why I asked the question. If you say, "Well, the VAC truck is used 20 hours a month on emergency basis, and only 10 hours a month on a non-emergency basis," to me, logically, we then do the analysis, "Okay, we refurbish or reuse our, our owned piece of equipment for the emergency use." And then, in order to negate the wear and tear on this already elderly piece of equipment, we rent it for the other little piece. What is the cost-benefit analysis of that? And you don't have hard numbers, I'm not expecting hard numbers, so don't.
But, I will for our next But I will for our next budget here, you know, our budget workshop. And the, you know, the vendor that, you know, Vector, of course, that company, there's only one, which, we have one vendor that works on it. We all, I'll also provide the list, rough number off the top of my head when I saw it, and like I said, I'll have it prepared for the budget workshop. We've already done for about $45,000 to $47,000 in repair on the current Vector. Once again, that truck is a, and I, like I said, I'm, and I apologize to correct the city manager, it is a 2008 Sterling Vector truck. Sterling, the model of that truck is no longer made. Every time to try and find any type of part for Sterling, it's pretty much like I'm searching for, you know, because that truck is no longer made, it's harder and harder to find parts. It's a 14-year-old truck. If I go ahead and, let's say, we go ahead and do modifications onto it to keep it running, I'm still dealing with a 14-year-old truck. Next year, it's going to be 15, 16. So, the time, the timeline is already, you know, to me, past, past the time. And the thing is, is that how much more money do we want to keep putting into a 14-year-old truck that's not made anymore? And with technology that's completely outdated and also the body, you know, the Vector body itself also, also in need of major repairs. The, the current estimate I'm getting is in the realm to rebuild, the, the components for the truck is in the realm of $250,000. But still, now I'm putting all these repairs, all this new body equipment on a 14-year-old truck. So, it's, it's what we want to think is feasible.
What I, what I'm looking for is analysis of how many more useful years of life does this truck have on an emergency basis? The range, the cost-benefit ratio of renting a truck for day-to-day usage versus emergency usage? And this whole thing may not work out, I understand, and we may wind up buying one. But I think on a 433 or $490,000 investment over seven years, we owe the, the due diligence to make sure, one, this is a, a cost-effective use of our funds. And I'm not arguing that the unit isn't old, I'm not arguing that the unit needs rebuilding, and I'm not using it, may not need to be done immediately, but let's look at it from, can we get by in renting a piece for another year or two? Because I just bought him a shiny new fire truck. We're likely going to need a new crane truck, because I don't see a way around that one as easily as kicking the can down the road for another year on a vac truck, if that's cost feasible.
I'm not going to say that, you know, and once again, if we're looking for a delay in time, that's one thing. But the, like I said, I'm just giving you the facts of what, the kind of truck that we're dealing with now.
Yeah, and ultimately, on a five-year capital plan, it may very well have a new vac truck. And I'm not arguing that part.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, do we need a vac truck right now? Do we have a plan? What's our cost-benefit to doing that? And get, getting that last 2%, because we just did have a major investment, we're going to have another major investment. I think we just bought some other six police cars, we just bought, and I, again, I agree, we're doing these capital improvements because they've been delayed over the cost, but what is the priorities? Where are our priorities overall on this?
Well.
And what's the cost-benefit for doing these priority? And we got to rate them, because, you know, right now, it's 433 plus 500 plus, that's 1.2 million out of Penny for Pasco, more or less.
I can say for the utility and public works department that the Vector truck is the most essential piece of equipment in their, in their fleet. The crane truck being second. The crane truck, you know, like both, both vehicles are equally important. The crane truck is a 2003, which is even much older, and it's not even necessarily the heavier pumps, it's just the crane itself, the motor, the drive, everything like that, after all these years, just cannot, cannot withstand the weight of picking up the pumps that it's been doing since it was new. So, that, that, of course, that's a separate issue. But we can go ahead, and like I said, I can get, I'm in the process of collecting more numbers as opposed to renting. But what I, what I want to try and, and point out is, it's not necessarily the essence of renting, because we can go out and try and rent a truck any day of the week, it's a matter of availability.
Well, yeah, but you.
Have one now. Yes, and I have one now that is functioning, but when I say it's, I have duct tape wrapped around, you know, certain parts to hold it together, I can literally do that. And I had the truck here last week to do that, I wish I would have had it here tonight for this, but I will have it here for our budget, our budget workshop.
You could show it to me, I wouldn't know what it is, but if we could do the analysis so we can look at it and verify if it's required for the budget workshop, then I think that's a much better discussion to have.
And I just wanted to make a real quick comment on these trucks. They're '06 and '08. The average life.
I apologize, I just, like, I don't have anything.
Somewhere in there, I think the crane truck was from '06, if I'm not mistaken. The average life of these trucks is normally around 10 years, plus we're in a coastal community, so you're dealing with salt. So, it actually should be less. So, we've, we've really used up probably very effectively the life of these vehicles, so that I don't think, in my opinion, that's not the issue. The issue is, is how do we replace them and do we rent versus do we buy? And I wanted to pass that over.
Wait a minute, you're, you're, now, you're already closing off the conversation before we even had the analysis of whether it's needed or not. You already said, oh, whether we went, rent or we, or lease or we buy.
Versus, well, do you, do you agree there's a need or do you think there's not a need for these trucks?
Ultimately, yes, there is a need, but let's do the, let's do the analysis, see where the need aligns to where our budget is right now.
Okay.
I think we need to look at it that way also, as McClary brought up, but also, I don't think it's really fair right now to bring this on staff as a, asking them, putting them in a hard spot.
And I'm not trying to say.
No, but I'm just saying.
But now they under.
I think they understand the point and what we're looking for.
Yes.
And I think we can go on from there. We can, we can think about it, give them more time to put the numbers together that you're requesting, which make, which make a lot of sense, but I can tell you, being around equipment in this area.
It takes a beating, I'm not arguing that.
It does, no, but I'm just saying, but it's always good to run the numbers and everybody's satisfied.
But, but the reason I wanted to put it tonight is because we have it on a budget a week, a week from now, and I wanted to flush these issues out so we can be prepared.
So.
Right.
We're flushing them out.
I think we've done that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I just don't think it's fair to put it on staff.
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay.
But, you know, I also wanted to hear from the other council people to see what their opinions are, and I was going to ask Councilwoman Sorel, what's your opinion is?
Well, if my house is on fire, I want a fire truck to show up. If my sewer is backing up, I want a vac truck to show up. So, I think everybody feels that way in their own, in their own way. So, I do think that we need to seriously replace these two pieces of equipment so that our people can do their job and our residents are not on fire or full of other stuff.
No, I, I'm with you. And the other issue with the vac truck that is a concern that I have is we're not only coastal, but you have a river, so if you have certain leaks and it goes into these bodies of water, we're, we're paying that money in fines as opposed to for equipment, so that's one of the concerns.
I don't think anybody's arguing that we will need the equipment.
I'm not saying sell the vac truck.
Right. I'm just, I'm just agreeing with Mr. McClary that we should run the numbers, if you do share responsibility to show the numbers to the citizens. So I think that's a great idea to show it. I don't think anybody's arguing that we might not need them, but there may be ways to look at it.
Okay, we'll, we'll get you the numbers. And then Councilman Kinsella, I know you're here virtually, I just wanted to see if you had any comments or input on, on these issues.
From what was presented, it, it's obvious there is this need. I'd just like to explore further on how to go about funding, financing the vehicles.
Okay. And that was to the vac truck, to the crane truck, is there, what you're, because you've, you've kind of addressed one of the two trucks.
Yeah. Both, I agree, both vehicles are needed, that I'd like the staff to explore on the, how to fund, finance them.
And the crane truck, is that the same issue or is that one where we look at it and say, "We take 60 grand out of Penny for Pasco and 60 grand out of utilities and use purchase it?" I mean, what's your opinion on that?
The crane truck, it sounds like that's at the end of its useful life as well.
Correct.
The, the analysis from that perspective is, you know, is a smaller crane truck viable versus, a cheaper crane truck viable versus a more expensive and renting for, you know?
The bigger projects, correct.
How many times are we using these bigger projects? Are we buying up, spending 125 or 120,000 for one time a year or are we spend, where we could spend 70,000 and rent for 1,500 bucks or something along that? What's our use? I mean, I know I like to buy the biggest stuff I can, I, I'm first to admit to that, but we don't always need it, and that's not always the most cost-effective. So that's the analysis I'd like presented. It may wind up that, yes, we need a new crane truck, yes, it has to be 120,000, yes, that satisfies all our needs, but we owed to the citizens spending their money to do the due diligence.
We'll get you the numbers. No, I, I agree.
It's all, it's all in the numbers, so.
Yeah.
Now, now that the staff have direction, so I think that's all we can ask for.
Well, I'm assuming that the crane truck is a 2003, that the parts for that are just as rare and just as difficult to find as the ones for the vac truck that is also outdated and everything. I just would hate to have the vac truck sitting out in front of my house and have it break down and we can't get it.
That lift station never rarely goes down.
Hey, you're at the end of it. You're at the other end.
Is, is there anything you guys wanted to talk about on this issue before it closes or anything else you wanted to request from staff in preparation for the budget?
I think staff can correct you on what we need.
Okay.
My question is, just briefly, this would be leased own, just like we're doing with most of our other, other stuff.
That's, that's the recommendation, I think, from staff.
Correct, it'd be a lease-to-purchase.
Okay. Would that have a, the maintenance package in it like we have done with the police department cars?
Yes, we were looking into that as well. Awesome.
Okay, that's all I had. Does anyone else have any comments? This was an add-on, so I do want to open it to the general public for any comments or concerns. I see one person from the general comment, or general public that would like to comment. Welcome, come on up. Mr. Mueller, name and address, please.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. I think you're on the right track here. A cost-benefit analysis is always required when you're spending money, especially in this dollars, but you failed to consider one important piece. You got one considering of purchasing all brand-new, and the other part was refurbishing the existing. And the missing piece is, have you considered looking for used gear that is not abused? Also for the crane, can a crane be added to any of our existing work trucks within the department? And I recall that vac truck was purchased within the last two or three years, because I was here when it was, was acquired. I don't think it was that, that much money, was it?
Do we have the numbers of what the original Vector truck was when it was purchased?
General comment? We can flesh that out in a second, but.
Yeah, but, but the point being is, it was used when we acquired it, it served a particular need. Could we continue to search as an alternative, acquiring a used, not abused, vehicle to suffice those needs? So, anyway.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else from the general public? Seeing no hands, we're going to close what was added as item six out, and that concludes our council business. Looking for old business right here, any comments?
I have none.
None?
None.
Mr. Kinsella?
Done.
Looking for motion?
Motion. Adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.